Okay, good evening. This is the City of Taft Planning Commission meeting. It's a special meeting being held Wednesday, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at City Hall. City of Planning Commission meetings are held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at HTP, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot YouTube dot com forward slash user forward slash City of Taft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Ritman comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at Y Mayfield at CityofTaft.org, made by phone to the city clerk's office at six six one seven six three one two two two. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting, and then any comments received will be read into the record. Again, a special meeting, and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Would you lead the pledge?
Sure.
And then we'll have our engagement from Joe.
Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Joe.
Let us praise bow our heads. God, we're so thankful. We just ask you, Lord God, as plans were made for our city, that you guide and lead. We're so thankful for this great city, for the things that happen here, so we just pray your blessings upon it and for all those that work so hard to make it a great place. We give you all the thanks and praise for that in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I need to reach into my glasses. I knew there was something I was having trouble with. Okay. So could you please call the roll?
Chairman Orrin is absent. Vice Chair Livingston.
Here.
Commissioner Dowden.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
And Commissioner Lykem is absent.
Okay, and as there are no requests for public comment, we will skip item one. We are going to also skip the minutes because we do not have present people who were present for the previous meeting in order to approve the minutes. So we are moving right away to study session, City of Taft Housing Element update for twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-one. Mark?
Thank you, Vice Chair Livingston. Please excuse me for standing over here. I have both little tickle, but also have a presentation for you this evening. We're continuing to move forward with the housing element here for the City of Taft. And one of the key aspects is going to be what is referred to as affirmatively furthering fair housing. And I'm going to go over what that is and how it affects or what we need to do in the housing element to address this, and I'll show some examples. So bear with me as I kind of move back and forth. But I wanted to focus more on what this is as opposed to having this and trying to analyze or go through any of the statistics for the city. So I'm borrowing from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. This is a presentation they've utilized for about two years now. So all the prior cities and counties for the last two years since January two thousand and twenty-one has had to implement these policies into their housing elements. So just if you wanted to know, this is the HCD Director Gustavo Velazquez. He always gives an intro whenever they have any presentations or information to put out there from HCD. So affirmatively furthering fair housing, they kind of go backwards here. They're just focusing on the state law, but actually starts with HUD, Housing and Urban Development on the federal level. But then the state in two thousand and eighteen passed Assembly Bill six eighty-six for it. And I think instead of using this quote that might not be easy to see, we'll go to the bullet points, which are similar to what I put in the staff report to kind of give you a head start on what this is. But the meaningful actions in, we'll go AFFH just to, so I don't stumble over all the words. But it's intended to address significant disparities in housing needs and access to housing opportunity, help replace segregated or, not replace, but affect segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living patterns. It seeks to transform racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity. And also, the final goal is to foster and maintain compliance with civil rights and fair housing law. So a little bit of a background, in the sixties, the early days of zoning and land use designations turned into being, some areas turned it into some discriminatory land use policies. And even in the real estate world, some biased mortgage practices and who they sold to and whatnot. And here, it's a short sentence, but restricted people of color from accessing opportunity and fair housing choice. But if you hadn't heard it before, it wasn't just people of color. There were title reports that still had exceptions listed in title reports where you could not sell to people of certain faiths. So like, a lot of Jewish were only buy in certain areas and the title or other restrictions were actually in place many years ago. So it's not just people of colors. Any class of people that's marginalized over the last hundred years as zoning has evolved negatively and positively. This is the basis for it, and you have the Fair Housing Act in sixty-eight, and it continues to evolve. We're here in Assembly Bill six eighty-six. And this is a map of San Diego on the left and Oakland on the right. And they have real basic categories. It wasn't quite your R one, R two yet. And I'm not sure which was the positive areas. I don't know if the red fuchsia was where the richer people were or the green was, but.
Not in San Diego.
Yeah.
That's the southeast San Diego. That's the low income.
North is kind of left and down to the left. But zoning evolved and in some places unfortunately did utilize zoning and land use regulations to kind of push certain people one way and other people the other way. So the need for AFFH is to address this. But and they refer to it as racially explicit practices were replaced by more subtle methods. Some people see single-family housing, all the tracks that get built again and again and again, sprawling to Bakersfield and other major cities seems to be more accommodating, more affluent, or even just middle and upper-middle income white people. And that it could be seen as exclusionary zoning policies. And it, and then when they do try to do affordable housing, they put a term that's going to be used over and over as low resource neighborhoods, which means it's a remnant piece of land way over here, not near a bus stop, not near a grocery store, not near anywhere else. So that's what they're referring to in low resource neighborhoods. Now, one thing to keep in mind as I go through this, unfortunately, it is kind of written that as a little bit of an air of things are wrong where you're at, you're at kind of thing. What we're intending to do is take these perspectives and analyze what's going on in Taft. And I'll show you later in a couple maps to see what's going on here. The housing element is a fact-based document, you know, what properties are we looking at for potential housing development? How much can it produce? And then is there some racial disparity or income disparity or something in Taft? And if it's not there, the map will show it, and then the housing element document itself will have the narrative that's discussing what was found. So don't worry too much about, you know, California is just rampant with all these. It tends to be these pocket areas throughout the state and actually even the country. So in two thousand and eighteen, and that what I mentioned there, it's the key term in this is the broadly defined with AFFH. So it's looking at this bigger picture of where are there some areas that maybe aren't being accommodated for housing, a mix of housing and all incomes? And so that's what we're going to be working on here. Here's a little process chart that the state is recommending to the cities. And we'll go through the four areas of outreach, assessment of fair housing, sites analysis, priority goals and actions. And I'll try to go quickly before I lose my voice. So there was four, but the, there is a fifth, goals, actions and programs. Last meeting, I went over a first strike through an underlying draft that looked at the twenty or so programs we had from the last housing element, you know, pursuing multifamily housing downtown, encouraging the moderate housing out at Sandy Creek Estates to continue and provide that type of housing. So in this go around for accommodating or what AFFH is trying to push is really go out there with outreach, assess the fair housing site inventory, and then identify and prioritize the contributing factors if they exist in your area. So the big thing you're going to see, and I'll show you some examples in a minute, is that the analysis is going to utilize data tables, maps, narration. The data tables are basically all that census data, the state, the state of California puts together of income, race categories, all that. And it's going to produce these maps and these different layers where you can look at each one and see where the trends are for each of the different categories. They do want to push us to find some local data and local knowledge. One of those things maybe that we'll be interviewing some of the local real estate agents if they've come across anything. It's not necessarily anything bad on them, but if they've come across some, you know, leftover language from fifty, sixty, seventy years ago and some of the properties they've processed and sold a house to somebody on. And then if there's any other relevant factors that are unique to your local area, your history, demographic trends, have there been some governmental barriers? Because there are some cities that probably even up until the last twenty years, they really have overly dictated what's coming to their city. May have not been necessarily directly aimed at a group of people, but it has in turn excluded a certain group of people. And then this is all the data that backs it up, that populates the tables and the maps. And then the element document itself will provide the paragraphs, the sentences describing what you see on those maps. So outreach, they want us to go to all segments of the population. Let's make sure I get my notes here. Now, we're a small city, and the data we get is going to be a little tough to process because we really only have two census tracts, and a lot of the data is based on the census tracts. And then even then, the block groups which take those tracks and break them up to three or four pieces, even then, we're about six to eight pieces of geographic area to see trends, and that's not a big sample size. But they want to push outreach. We have to document it, provide a summary of the fair housing in that outreach effort, and then receive legitimate public input and local knowledge. One thing I don't think it mentions too well in here is, I think it's this one here. Making sure we're able to make it as easy as possible for people to attend. And they want us to look, they don't say it explicitly, but a little bit broader than the City of Taft. So there's a good chance we'll be looking to the three neighbors we have here. And we may even have one of our workshops up at the Veterans Center. I've started to reach out to Waken to see when we could squeeze into their schedule if we'd be able to use their facility. Even though Ford City isn't part of the City of Taft, we're all nine three two six eight, we're all Taft. People could be transitioning from one neighborhood to the next as their situation changes. But we need to hit all these when we do our outreach to the public here and including as many people as we can in the process. And they want also push us to reach out to the public housing authorities. There is one in Kern County. Community-based organizations don't have too many here. But there are some county-wide ones that we could reach out to. But this is a bunch of recommended actions. We can have the Ministers Association as a potential group to reach out to as well. Let's see here. Okay, moving on to the assessment of fair housing. Now, this is where the nitty-gritty is. These five categories, but they even have subcategories that I'll show on an example map soon. But it's these five analysis areas of fair housing, segregation, integration, disparities and access to opportunity, disproportionate housing needs, displacement, and then racially, ethnically concentrated poverty. And a lot of the, these really hit some of these bigger cities because they have such unique geographies and groups of people in different parts of their city to really see it there, not so much in a small city like ours. But the state has provided a lot of the data and mapping to help us at least see where we're starting. And then I'll work on getting a consultant to take all that and sum it up for us to help with the real technical analysis. And that's where we get at for it on the assessment for fair housing is that we need to get at an appropriate geographic level. And that's where I mentioned that we'll be looking at the city boundaries, but also some of the lines between census tracts and block groups, combined city areas and some of the county areas. So part of Taft Heights is with all the folks who live up on Terrace and Washington and all that. And then there's even a little pocket of neighborhood behind the fort. That's combined with the folks that are not behind the fort. So I'll show those boundary lines in a minute. When we get to the actual data later on, a couple of months, I'll show you those details. And then segregation and integration, the state's provided us your basic demographic statistics of which racial and ethnicity groups are in the area, family status, persons with disability and income. So it's not just race and ethnicity. They are trying to push for cities and counties to analyze those with disabilities. And then also the disparity in access to opportunity. So education availability, transit and transportation, economic development, healthy environment and other relevant factors. Then they provide some data that shows the cost burden, how much of your income is put towards housing and your living expenses, overcrowding situation, substandard housing, homelessness and displacement. And then on the racially and ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, they've really kind of zeroed in on this one here where they have this essentially recap with the slash. And then also the RCAA, which is the racially concentrated of affluence. So if you're from here or elsewhere, wherever there's a, the people, I don't want to sing all the folks here, but like people on the hill that are gated. And I'll show you a map where, maybe we could just go ahead and show that now, where one of kind of the. Oh, please be there. Well, you're going to have to follow me as I zoom in, but the areas in red are where those RCAA. So it's regional racially concentrated area of affluence with an A, which means those are the higher income levels. And it's generally assumed it's both high income and typically white. So what you see for Bakersfield in that center cluster of red is a lot of the west and northwest areas of the newer suburbs. The demographic data all kind of adds up to those areas being these concentrated areas of affluence. And then down, don't know if you can read it from there, where it says Midway Valley is the three census tracts that basically make up our greater Taft area. And none of them are colored red where certainly there's people who are doing well here, but it's not to the level where it's identified as that. So we're clear in some areas. These will still be included in our housing element. And we have some other demographic data we'll have to address in the housing element. But we're pretty much, I don't want to say in the clear, but when it comes to this particular metric, the racially concentrated area of influence, we don't have it here.
Is that because we're too small?
No, I think we're just ethnically diverse enough. And I'll show that, I think, when I'm done with the slides. There's a, the other map that you might have saw for a second there shows kind of the central part of Taft where I'll just give a preview in that we're kind of a sixty-five, thirty-five, white to Latino. Whereas the, just in the county side, it's probably the reverse where Latino sixty-five, white and other races are thirty-five, if you will. It's an oversimplification of the percentages, but I think because of that, that's why those other areas are colored red. And then I was just in a webinar yesterday about this. We're getting more and more examples as more and more housing elements in the other parts of the state are giving us examples of what the state's looking for. Even an area, let's just say those red areas in Bakersfield were ninety-five white and five percent other, they're still making them dig deeper into who's that five percent? You know, where are they at? Are you reaching out to them? Is there anything unique about that five percent group? So whatever you end up with as far as the, the data, they still want some narrative explanation of who the people are, what's going on in your area. And then we talked a little bit about the site inventory. I provided the updated list of the properties in Taft. It looked like even with some of the development that's happened the last eight years, we still have enough existing vacant land that will meet the site inventory. And I'll be showing something a little bit later where an example city, El Centro, down in Imperial County. Let's see where are we here? Where we have a good, you know, reference of how they overlay their site inventory on the data maps. Each one, it shows how it interacts with a highly diverse area, not so diverse racially, income, different things. So we'll go over that in a minute. Let's see here. So when utilizing the site inventory, you got to meet the arena, but they're also wanting to see different income levels and housing types kind of spread through your community, which I think we're going to be pretty good with that here as well. Where, yeah, we do have a big single-family development beyond Hillard, but the center part of the city, we have infill sites like we're Habitat Win, but we have a couple more individual lots throughout the older central part of the city that could have single-family duplexes, tri and fourplexes, and if it's big enough, maybe a larger apartment. So they're wanting it spread across all the categories or at least all the categories assessing what our inventory looks like. So if you have the recaps and that other racially affluent area, they want to see what are the contributing factors to that? It's the housing type, the, it's the new area that's sprawling out, and the developers are just producing the singular product and all those kind of things are the contributing factors if they exist. And then when we get to drafting out the new goals for this next eight-year period that this housing element covers, we went over the goals, the prior twenty-some-odd goals before. Some of them were completed, so we're probably down to about ten or twelve that are probably ones that are just constant efforts by every city and county. But when it comes to contributing factors or manageable list of efforts a city can do to make sure it doesn't occur or show up, those type of things, they're saying, they're not trying to overwhelm us with fifty different programs we got to do in an eight-year period. It's a manageable four to six. One of the easiest ones that I think we're probably going to end up doing is figuring out how we can translate as many of our documents as we can. So getting a translation service or using a local source for that is probably a pretty straightforward one. So those that English isn't their first language are able to follow along with what's going on in the city.
Yeah, given the size of the Hispanic population, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, when, when we get digging into the, the population metrics and all that, you'll see the numbers and justification for a lot of these things. And then this list matches the webinar that I sat in on yesterday where they're really wanting us to analyze and show the reflection of the results of the AFFH analysis and the contributing factors if they're there for us. And they want us to be specific. They don't want explore, consider, study on it. That's kind of passive language, language. They want more action-oriented language in the programs. And part of that goes with a clear timeline with specific dates. By, you know, twenty twenty-five, let's do this. By twenty-six, we do this. Ongoing is not usually adequate, but it is for, you know, if we're going to have something not related to this, we want to encourage the city and the folks here to, you know, issue five to ten permits for ADUs each year just to get more of those units out there kind of thing. But for AFFH, when we've complete our analysis, something should really rise to the surface and help us see what things are needing to be addressed, have a beneficial meaning impact during that planning period, and then go well beyond a continuation of past actions. I go beyond is pretty much universal across the whole analysis we're doing. That's why I mentioned we're probably going to have a little bit of analysis of what's going on in Ford City, South Taft and Taft Heights in this process. Because the lines, the city boundary tract and. South Taft and Taft Heights in this process, uh because the lines, the city boundary tracked and block groups. Don't all line up. These are just recommended uh actions uh in the housing element, they're pretty much standard from before as well. But one uh some of it is to um protect existing residents from displacement, some of that is. Uh we've all heard the term uh gentrification when developers or certain income level folks come in and try to revitalize an area. It revitalizes it, but it changes the income level needed to be able to be there. And that's happened in a lot of downtowns, it's resulted in nice downtowns, but it doesn't welcome everybody back into it. So we'll go over this when we get more in-depth with the um. Housing element update, uh common mistake and pitfalls, um. Uh second one, if we just refer to a county level analysis of impediments to address the local situation. We'll probably have a lot of, like I said, zoomed out um analysis on it, just because it'll capture more people and we'll see the. The differentiation between city area and the county areas. Um but we won't be using anything the current county does for their um housing element. And that goes with the regional, um. We won't solely do regional comparison, but it will be uh um. Current county numbers will be in it just to show what, how small we are to the overall county area. Oh it if you saw the prior document as um us, maybe one or two of the other cities of a co- comparable size to us. Bakersfield in the county, just to show the breadth of population change, housing unit change, things like that. But when it comes to AFFH, what happens in Bakersfield doesn't necessarily happen here or Arvin or elsewhere, so. Let's see if we can get to the viewer, here we go. So the state's done a pretty good job of getting this uh what they call a data viewer. And it's a public um usable uh GIS mapping system. The table doesn't look this way anymore, but it has sixty-plus data layers where you just kinda click a little eye eye on icon. That turns the colors on and off for the different things, so we'll take a look at Taft real quick. So this is what it looks like here. So what I have here is. Excuse me, um the predominant race of each area. But when you click on the map, you'll see a little blue. Uh lined area that captures most of the central part of Taft. And if we go like that, there you go. So it's providing the information of the different racial groups in Taft. So in the main central area, which goes all the way from the airport addition, all the way out to Sandy Creek Estates, but not up the hill. Um we have about five thousand residents that are white, but not any uh um combination with Hispanic or Latino. Um uh nationalities, but there are twenty-six hundred those that are. Or have uh one member or however you say with the mix of Hispanic or La- Latino uh race in their mix. Um black or African-American, there's fifty-two, Asian alone, two oh one, and then some um some other groups that are under three hundred each. But as you see there, five thousand white alone, roughly twenty-five hundred. Um Latino, that's a two-thirds, one-third mix, and that's probably why we didn't get any of the um. Red areas on that prior map, and now I'm gonna just show you this other group which. Um that this entire group here. Twenty-two hundred and eight people white alone and then seventeen hundred ninety-four people Hispanic or Latino. That is everything from where Wood Street hits thirty-three, all the way to up to where everybody lives up on Terrace, so that's part of the. Issue here, we'll we'll dive into when we get into the details, but it uh essentially kinda has two, three neighborhoods, if you will. Uh across one census tract, so we'll probably be breaking this up and there is data sets within all these. That do go down to a block group level. Don't know if I can pull it up to do it quick for you guys. And apologize there, I was hoping to get you a preview, but we'll have to do that another um date. But um there are smaller group areas where there's a airport addition to about Second Street is one subgroup, second to. I believe uh all the way to tenth, but not the homes beyond tenth and then tenth to Sandy Creek Estates. And so there's some smaller groups we'll be able to analyze and uh uh do some deep dives on, so. We'll be going through all the different layers and let's see if we got it here. Okay, so this presentation is on the HCD website, so you can go through it as well, um. Uh but as you can see, there's some workshop listed there back in June twenty-second in the. Um Association of Bay Area Governments, and that was probably back in twenty twenty-one when it was their turn to go through this process. What I wanna show you now is the example in El Centro, which hopefully that will wrap this up, so. This is one of probably sixty-some-odd maps with those different layers. This is a pretty basic one where um the racial demographics. Um the percent of total non-white population, so that redder area to the right is eighty percent or more non-white. But what you see here. You have these properties in green. Properties in green, red and yellow, the green is the above moderate, so those are folks who have incomes a hundred, hundred and twenty percent of the median. Generally speaking, those are probably folks that are making sixty, seventy thousand dollars and up. And that's what they're presuming, they're probably single-family tracts. Um out at the edges, I'm not sure what the terrain is in El Centro, but maybe it's some hillside home type stuff. Yellow is the moderate, which is the eighty percent to hundred and twenty percent, you're forty to um seventy thousand dollar income. Uh area, and then this uh bright red is the lower income, which is everything below the eighty percent line. So you kinda have a mix where you have some green areas and this highest racial concentration of nine non-white folks and then this. Orange area with a bigger chunk than the green, and it's tough to see on the screen, but there's a lot of little. Specs which are the infill properties, just like we do in the ce- central part of town, so. I think this worked with the state because you had each of these three income categories pretty much. In each area, but there's a very small area. Not as eighty percent and up of a non-white uh population area, cuz it's a heavy. Uh Hispanic Latino area down there near the border with uh El Centro, Imperial, Calexico and all that, so. That we're gonna be doing this where all those sites I uh went over with you last time. Will be overlaid on each of these maps, and then there's gonna be an analysis of what does that mean. And that's basically what the the state's looking for, so it's not necessarily a mandate to. Fix whatever issue may exist a hundred percent, it's more of fact-finding. Um analyze it and report it out in this housing element and then set up those programs, so we have. Uh tasks to work on during the eight years from uh twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one, which is the time period of the housing element. As you uh it's not on there, but um El Centro's is like two years ahead of ours, I guess I guess you could say. So I will leave my presentation right there, I know it's quite a bit of stuff, I kinda bounced around a bit. But I wanted this to be a standalone topic, so that when we start getting into it and I start showing some uh Taft examples. That you're used to seeing maps like this and uh at least this is your first run at what all the different terms mean and the acronyms mean. And we'll uh uh get it all ready for you when we come back at a future meeting. So I'll leave it at that and I'm open for any questions you may have.
Either of you have any questions?
I do. Just in the disparity of. My heart and my concern goes towards the low-income people who are renting. I know there's one um big. Um apartment building that was built with housing funds years ago and during COVID. The rent went from five hundred dollars a month to over eight hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom place. Um I know that the pastors are seeing this with their people too, the struggle that people are having to. To pay for housing and what that's causing is multifamilies to go into a single-family dwellings. Kind of under the table, and so there is a huge part of our population that. Have a pretty extreme housing need and they're paying probably over fifty percent of their income. For even uh housing that is substandard. I know one family that pays six hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom house, which at this point is good. But they have to empty their bathtub with a uh with a barrel, with a a pail. And their toilet barely drains, and they're afraid to say anything to their landlord because they don't want to lose their. Their rental, and this landlord has been very slow at fixing anything. So I think that um. These are things that as a city that we need to address, and I think it a a really good way of. Of addressing it is with education. For example, um some type of outreach on uh tenant laws, house or how um. Tenant landlord laws. Uh other options, things that, things that will help them and empower them. Because there's not a lot that we can do about rents, at this point, we don't have rent control. We don't have any project, uh any section-eight housing projects here. So they have to deal with what they've got and and we know that we have to deal with what we've got, but I think that. In this plan of being proactive, that there are some things that we could do as a city. That would proactively help a large proportion of our community. Um another thing is we do have the first-time homebuyer program, which is wonderful. But I think that we need to get that out there to the community in a way that's really effective, maybe through social media. A lot of times as a city, we we get stuck on having group meetings, town hall type meetings, but there's. Very few of the people that we really want to meet that that really have these needs. That we're that that we're not reaching, and so I think that we need as a city to be creative in how we reach. The people who need the most help. And I just um, I just have some real concerns about how people are living. And I think that uh in this plan, you said that they want specifics, maybe we can creatively. Do some specific outreaches in our community that really effectively help. The people who are really needing these help in in uh in renters. Maybe even find out how we could uh attract. A section-eight housing pro- program here in Taft. Where people who, I know that we do have the seniors. Um that 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 the um Heritage Park does rent according to income. And the people there pay that, but if we had some options like that for that group of people. I think it really would show us being proactive in helping. A large percentage of our population, and I will get off my soapbox right now.
No, it's a very appropriate, uh there is the Kern County Housing Authority that tends to be the. The broader umbrella that covers that here, there is at least one section-eight unit that's in the center part of town, I won't call out the address. Uh the property owner reached out to me a number of years ago, cuz um they were debating whether or not to sell it to somebody else who could be the landlord, but it actually is a. Really nice and well-maintained property, at least when he had it. I haven't revisited the property in the past couple of years when I think he sold during the pandemic. Um and but his or the people who do enter into that as a landlord and. Uh setting up properties to rent to those that are low-income, they go through the Kern County Housing Authority, and that's definitely a group. Um that I would need to and uh if we get a consultant to um s- speak with them, interview them, figure out what barriers there are. For them to help us out here, and it kinda is a repeated statement. There that people make for us and probably even some of the other suburb cities of Bakersfield where uh. Certain groups and many services don't go out to our area because we're way out there. And that's gonna be something that maybe is ends up being a uh theme throughout our. Uh document from just a builder beyond the Colson Construction Group and. Builders that could provide multifamily housing to provide a variety here, why aren't we getting those, we're way out there, you know, those kinda things are some of the. The narrative, the stories that the state does wanna see and read in our documents, so. When it comes to specifically rent assistance and all, both rent assistance and then um. I guess you could just call it the Renters Bill of Rights of what they could do when a landlord isn't stepping up in their role. Um that's something I'll either discuss with them or if it's something else. It's most likely at a county level that has the teams and services like that, but that's a very appropriate. Thing we need to get on here for um everybody who rents out here.
So that would be an appropriate part of this plan?
Very much so.
Yeah, um in one of my previous lives, I was a section-eight housing manager, handled section-eight and. Rather than looking for. There's two ways people kind of picture section-eight, one is that there's an apartment complex where everybody in it's section-eight. Um essentially done usually by a low-income uh builder. But the what I managed were individual um applications done by individuals. Um there was, of course, a waiting list, which there's never enough money to cover section-eight. But it would seem that maybe one of the things we could be advocating for in this is. Uh and I don't know if this isn't already too, but the Department of Social Services building should have a section-eight. Rep in the building to help people do section-eight applications. And who, because they're out here, can do, you know, y- you have an annual inspection that's required of every property. Um which is, of course, an attempt to help keeping the properties safe and workable, we we cut off people's. Payments if they weren't, you know, maintaining the the property, even down to sometimes as much as just holes in the carpet not being. Appropriately dealt with, um so I I I'm perfectly happy with the idea that we need to. To at least advocate in this document, if we don't already have it, and if we do have it, then the question is. Okay, how many people, we don't need to know where they are, but how many people are actually section-eight here? How many section-eight um vouchers are there for Kern County? And what percentage of those are coming here, cuz if we're not getting the right percentage, then we need to be pushing our electeds.
How much do they have, what's the demand? Those kinds of numbers.
And I think that would be appropriate data for this.
And that's part of this document as well is both identifying where we, the city, or the resource. Whatever the program may be, and which ones do we outsource, cuz there's a county agency set up for it or a nonprofit or whatever it may be. Um that's what we'd be putting into this document is identifying who those groups are. Actually reaching out to them, not just identifying them, that's another aspect of the go beyond what you did before where. I I'm fairly confident a couple of our programs say, oh, we have brochures or content and phone numbers for this, this and this agency. When um we probably haven't talked to them in a while and residents have probably gone on their own to figure out how they could get assistance from them. So this go-around, we'll definitely be reaching out to make sure we have um updated contacts, updated information, we could probably provide at the front desk. Uh things like that are the efforts the state's looking for from all of us.
Yeah, the the. A a lot of it, the city's not really in a position to do more than be a a clearinghouse. But knowing which buttons to push is very important. In my experience with a lot of my section-eight clients were, they needed help, they weren't going to frankly. Make the application themselves, and some of them, even if they made the application, at that time, were eight thousand people on the waiting list. Out of, you know, a a county of three million people, and eight thousand's still a pretty big chunk. Um and I don't know if there's a waiting list, to be honest with you, here in Kern County. If there isn't, then we need to be pointing people to to those opportunities, um. We might have issues with the quality of the housing, though.
And that is something to discuss in the document as well. Just to explain what's being seen up here on the screen. Just to explain what's being seen up here on the screen, the colors and the layer that's activated here to show these colors is the overpayment by renters. So it's not quite getting to its affordability, but it's how much people are overextending. And it's probably tough to see in that square up there, but forty-nine point three percent of the residents within that blue boundary, which is the main central area of Taft, is overextending themselves to, uh, with their rent. They're paying more than thirty percent of their net income on rent and living expenses.
And that's where our oldest housing stock is too.
Yeah, yes, that is the majority of the city. There's just that little area, which is the Terrace, uh, Drive that's combined with the, uh, uh, Taft Heights and South Taft.
Yeah. Central portion of our community is the oldest housing stock in Taft. I mean, obviously you have the same issue probably up in South Taft and ta- down in Ford City, but still.
They're at fifty-three point four percent
Yeah.
of residents who are spending more than thirty percent of their income on rent. And there's even one for homeowners, and I looked at that earlier, not to go too much back and forth with these colors, but even homeowners are overextending here. Uh, I think it's a good fifty percent as well. Their mortgage is more than thirty percent of their income.
Yeah.
Is that what's considered like thirty percent's a good number?
That's where everybody starts, even the lenders start there and they try to figure out based on the income you report to them and they, when they check everything, uh, they try to see where that's at and if you're overextending yourself in any way.
It used to be thirty percent of your net and forty percent with your utilities and other obligations. If you, so if you were paying for gas and electric and, uh, other things, the bank I worked for, we, we went as high as forty percent.
And that's probably the detail of the person that probably does qualify, looking at the rest of their expenses. Whereas this is, these are more just looking at the broad population.
Right.
Uh, but when you do start getting focused on folks who might be housed somewhere.
So if they're, if they're at fifty percent, that's just their rent, we're not even talking about what their other expenses.
Well, it's half of people are overextending themselves per the metric of spending more than thirty percent on rent or, um, your mortgage. Which most of us do, and I, I believe there is a statistic somewhere in here where it will show what the average overage is for those that overextend. I think it is pushing forty-plus percent for most people.
And it isn't unusual for homebuyers who are, who have newer mortgages to actually be above the line.
Right.
And over time, if their jobs and other things progress, they then go below that line.
Right.
It's still a tough start if you're at forty percent.
Yes.
So I've seen, you know, population go up and housing's been the same, if not drop every year here. You know, we've had our spurts of growth, but it seems like every year we, a few houses burn down or get torn down or whatever, and we are getting more population. This, I'm just seeing it, I don't know the numbers and I think some of it's counted, not counted. And when I, I think of Taft, I think of Ford City and South Taft, we're all one. And, you know, you kind of move where you can. And every year I see a, a group of young kids graduate, they get a job, they look for apartments or houses or whatnot, and a majority of them have to leave to Bakersfield because there's just no houses here, they gotta live at home with mom and dad or go in five ways and get an apartment or, you know, and they slowly move away. Our big solution here is housing, but also inflation's gone up. So, you know, I have some rentals and my taxes keep going up or, you know, to maintain a house goes up because contractors are more and materials more. So, and, uh, wages are not growing with inflation.
Yes.
So between population and wages not going and just not enough housing, i- it's, it's a, it's been bad the last couple of years. I get calls all the time looking for places and I think me and a few others, we kind of, hey, call this person, call this person. And then they tell them to call me, but there's just none open, you know? I know me and some others, we try to be pretty fair, so we get a little turnaround, but there's just no houses out there and, and to go for like, if I was to try to buy one as a rental, I can't hardly rent it for what I'd have to pay for the mortgage right now.
Right.
So we're just not buying. So for people that aren't quite ready to buy or can't qualify, especially with the interest rates where they are, there's just, there's a big problem right now. And that's on, I got little apartments to single-family homes and I see the ranges and it's just high. Um, housing a big, be a big solution to that.
And Commissioner Dowd, and I think you've made comments in the past too about getting more of the different housing variety as well because of probably what people have been asking, asking you about, what do you have available or what do you know that's available?
Yeah.
We're, we're not quite there and having enough development activity that's providing the mix of newer and, uh, the older units and fixing those up and having the variety that every ar- area should have. Um, so that, that's part of what we'll be doing on the outreach. Do what we can to at least reach out to, um, Kern County Housing Authority. Maybe we'll, you know, poke the right bear to get, uh, someone who's doing mostly work in Bakersfield and are looking for other work in the outlined cities. So, um, hopefully that comes to be, but it's definitely something that will be analyzed in this overall housing element. But in these different areas, and this here is the state's, um, data on the overcrowding where there's, could be reported or unreported, um, you know, multiple families in a home and whatnot. Where it does break down that there's a total of three thousand housing units in that blue area. Uh, one person per room, which is, uh, the bedrooms, is twenty-eight hundred of those, but, and then there's, uh, ninety-six, that's one and a half, and then thirty-one where there's more than one and a half people per room where you have multiple kids, multiple adults, all that kind of stuff. But overall, less than five percent of the units in that area are overcrowded. The darker tan to the north for Fu- Ford City, they're in the five to ten percent range. And there's probably a chance that both are under-reported. Um, so there's some, even though you get this exact data, um, there's probably gonna be some narrative in it that anecdotally, I'm sure we all either read in the paper or heard presentations by the high school district where they're in the Taft City Schools where the, uh, um, student population, there's this wave coming that they have to be ready for. So that's something outside of all this data and mapping that we'd ha- have to include. And I'm sure I could get that from the Taft Union High School because they made a simple presentation that since, uh, might be almost a year ago, I think it was right before school started last year.
I believe there's a, quite a few families here that just aren't counted in that number.
Right.
One of the questions I, I, I'm curious about, when they say they're identifying what's an overcrowded house, what is the, what is the numbers they're using again?
It looks like this person per room counts, and I'll have to define that later for everyone. And I haven't seen it quite that way. The other overcrowding that I'm more familiar with was in the building code where any single-family home, no matter what the bedroom count is, anybody over ten, that single-family home is considered, um, overcrowded.
Yeah, um, and, and I don't know if this, you know, makes much of a difference in Section Eight. It's been a while ago now, I know that, but, um, two persons per bedroom, actually two persons per room excluding kitchen and bathrooms.
Right.
So if you had three bedrooms, a front room and a family room, you'd be looking at, yeah, a fairly large number of people, which might be considered overcrowding.
But that's also that line that's in the building code about the ten, at least with a single-family home.
Yeah.
So apartment would be, I think apartment is different, it's two per bedroom and one for the plus one, I think. I don't think they do family room.
I don't remember section, I don't know if Section Eight does that or not. I, I, I don't, it's been too long, but I just know that, that what we count may not always be what's on the ground simply because you're u- using different numbers from different departments.
Yeah, so the extra data table, as long as we get the okay from the school districts that, eh, yeah, you can, you know, as long as we properly reference them and whoever prepared their documents. There's obvi- uh, another group of data that's out there suggesting we probably don't have enough housing units based on this wave of extra students. Where you either have multiple families or children or, uh, families are still having, um, more than the two to three kids, uh, because, eh, at the bottom, uh, it's a percent. Um, Taft, when I've looked at statistics since I've been here the last ten years, hasn't been much more than about three people per household. I think it's a combination, you do have plenty of young families, but I think we have plenty of, uh, empty-nester seniors where either the two adults are still there, so they're bringing that average down to three, or some, uh, live-alone, you know, widowers or whatever reason why they live alone brings that down as well. But we have that mix of plenty of seniors and plenty of young families with plenty of kids. They keep it around three, but the county and Bakersfield-wide areas are pushing four. They're probably, um, like three point eight, three point nine to four people per home.
I would imagine that's really true.
But there is a statewide and national trend as well, which I'll leave, leave it to a consultant to explain it. But there is kind of a trend where folks are having fewer children as well. So that's probably put into some of the, the trends that are in some of these data tables and all that and how they project what the anticipated population, when we get to that in the document. Um, that's why it'll look like it's a flatter chart of what, uh, our population would look like eight years from now and twenty-five years from now.
I think my, my mom's house is roughly seventeen hundred square feet and given the number of rooms, under Section Eight, twelve would have been okay.
Right.
Twelve and seventeen hundred square foot is a pretty.
Cramp space.
Yeah.
So this is, uh, a new layer and aspect of what we're having to include into the housing element. The housing element document you saw is pretty much gonna stay roughly the same. It'll have a little bit more of the a- analysis of this. What I'm seeing along with that example of El Centro's, uh, housing element, I believe their document is four hundred plus pages and about a hundred of it is just the appendix that has all sixty-plus maps showing how the available developable sites layer over the top of all of these different categories. So that's where this document's be, gonna be pretty big. I'll try to baby-step it for all of us so we can absorb as much of it as we can and not just send it to you guys, rubber stamp it, get it to council and we're good. We'll try to understand as much of the, maybe not details, but the bigger picture of, uh, what we're aiming to do. Uh, make sure we have services lined up or at least information lined up. I'll work with the city clerk's office who's worked, worked a lot on the housing side of things in Taft. So we'll, we'll definitely piece this together and I'll bring you guys along for the ride. Each meeting, each little aspect that we need to cover, um, and hopefully we'll be done later this year or early next year.
Any other questions, observations?
No.
No, thank you, Mark, I guess we can now move on to whatever you need to report from your report.
I'll just be brief in that, um, I'm not sure if it's, uh, publicized yet, but, um, we're getting that time of year, um, where the two seats for the planning commission, uh, that will be reappointed in June are coming up. Look for the public information for how, um, and it happens to be that two folks who aren't here tonight. Um, but, uh, if they want a secret appointment, they'll have to refile with the city clerk's office. Anybody who, um, is out there watching can submit as well. Um, and it'll be an open selection process at city council how it's been in years past. So reach out to the city clerk's office if, uh, there's anybody who's wanting to, uh, volunteer as a planning commissioner.
Only requirement is to be a citizen of the city.
Yes.
Located within the boundaries, that's it.
And the city clerk's office will help you if you're unsure where the boundary line is.
We've run into that a few times.
Yeah.
What, I'm not in the city?
And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, um, then let's move on to, um, of course our city attorney isn't present today.
He relayed no message for me to share.
Okay, and, um, any comments from the commissioners?
None at this time.
Not for me.
Uh, none for me, so then identification of representative to city council. As usual, I'm always available if either one of you want to do it though, I'm perfectly happy to.
And you're good at it?
You're good.
Okay, so I will do the presentation. In fact, I think last night somebody kept mentioning, i- is there a, a report? Thinking that I might be getting up there because usually the second council meeting is, is the one I do it at. And, uh, it was like, finally the, the, uh, chief got up and gave some numbers. Um, so, okay, we're now adjourned, uh, just a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.